I'd like to call the meeting of the Escondido Library Board of Trustees. To order, please. Chris, do you want to...Chris, the item you want to speak about is not on the agenda, so would you like to speak now?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good afternoon, members of the board librarian, members of the staff, both city staff and library staff. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this afternoon. The comment I have to make came to us, not through our...you know that I'm part of the library watchdog, so I'm here to represent the group. But the comment that we got that I'm reporting to you on today came to us directly and didn't come through the website. Excuse me. So, we have a library patron who told us that she was objecting to an email she received from the library after she had checked out a book. The follow-up email she received stated that she had just saved so many dollars by using the library card, and further stating that her supposed total savings for the year by using the library were X number of dollars. This patron states that she is not opposed to being reminded that using the library can save library users money, but the way it is being done is misleading and incorrect. The dollar per dollar comparison with new items you own is not honest. So this is the report or the comment, you know, of a library patron. So I...we bring this comment to you for your consideration and maybe to discuss whether this kind of a PR practice is in the best interest of the library. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Our next item is approval of the minutes of the January 9th Library Board of Trustees meeting. You all have received these minutes. Are there any additions, corrections, changes that you'd like to make? If not, we would entertain a motion, please. Moved by Schwab. Second by Cameron. Please vote.
Through four zero, Corny absent.
Current business item, our item is developing metrics, and this was put on by Carolyn and John. Who would like to speak first?
So I think, John, there's a PowerPoint slide that we will most likely talk to, and then I'll go into the...
Basically, this is something that we were...have been focused on since we became on...being on the board in April of last year. And we decided to wait until the introduction...implementation of Polaris, because that changed the entire operating system and would give us the population of reports and what was available to us. And then we wanted to wait a couple months for staff to digest using Polaris, and that's pretty much where we are now. What we're finding out, this initially looked to be pretty simple to do, but there is a lot of information we have to cover. And the sources we're focusing on, and this isn't exclusively, there's possibly where there are elsewhere also, we just don't know. We don't know what we don't know. There is a large volume of reports available off of Polaris now, and an analysis by my friend Carolyn, that's what the plan was, if anybody wants to help, that's great, go through these reports and see if there's anything that makes sense to...where it's just a report off the system that makes...that we have consented, by consensus, decided to be useful for measuring performance. And as you can see, as the goal, we're trying to minimize reporting requirements that the LSNS staff have to go through, minimize any interpretation of data, in other words, whatever the report says, and that's what we use, we're not going to try to put any windage on it. And to make this a constructive effort, we think it requires both ourselves, city, LSNS, and library staff to be there to do that. The plan is we'll...Carol and I are pretty much willing to be the arse of the place. If anyone wants to assist in that, we're happy to have it, but we're refined in doing the results, and we will bring what we think works to the group, and we can talk over and decide what to do long-term. The...I think another part of this goal now is we've been tweaking reports and having looked at them just three or four times since we began, and that's the good thing. The sooner or later, we have to stop tweaking and just say, okay, this is it. And not to say that long-term, there might be other things that come up on a weekly look at on a annual basis to change something that we'd all have to reach to. But other than that, let's just stick with the format we come up with, and if we come up with things that look to be better, we can talk about it, but changing reports on a weekly basis, I don't think does...well, it...the consistency, not having a consistency is problematic in the long-term, and it could require rather on staff's time and the ability to burden them with anything more than the absolute minimum necessary. And so it's not to burden ourselves and etc., we're going to contact as many LSNS-run libraries and see how they do. And Joanna has offered to reach out and help us with that, and we think this is going to be, hopefully, eye-opening. Polaris should know about MK Solutions, there might be something there. Library IQ, if you're just looking at this, it's exactly what Katie told me it would be. It appears to be a powerful tool, but it's going to take a long time for us to see what useful can be done out of it. And what I'm reading in it, I sunk down into it a little bit, it's more for, say, a specific action someone might take. If you want to check on your uncertainty codes, the circulation, the aging, whatever, that's where this might be powerful and useful. But as far as developing statistics that we look for metrics we use every month, doesn't seem so. But that's just my first, listening to an hour of a webinar and reading a couple other things, that's my first read on it. Any questions?
Can you hear me?
There you go.
I'm sensing, I think I understand the process, correct me if I'm wrong, this process that we would go through would help us focus on what appears to be significantly important to focus on. Now, there's so many things that are going on in the library, and we see all the reports, and folks checked out all sorts of things like that. Am I reading too much into your thoughts, John, that what you're proposing is that'll help us over reasonably short-term, to say, hey, this is the big problem we need to deal?
Yeah, we're looking at this from a philosophically, from a Pareto, we're going to be looking at the eighty, ninety percent that can be seen on a few statistics versus the other ninety percent of statistics that cover maybe ten percent of what happened. We're going to be looking at the bigger ones, but what we want to look at is we cut...let's assume we come up with numbers sometime later this year that everyone, and reporting methodology, everybody's happy with, we would stick with that. And then our people that succeed us in this position, city's position, LSNS, whatever, seven, eight years from now, towards the end of this contract, they can look and say, oh, look, this is better, it's still as good as it was. And you take the motion out of the service contract, you try to take the motion out of, we're only looking at facts on how performance measures year after year. And as you alluded to, if we see some performance metric going in the wrong direction, then the people that read these reports, us and city and staff, can take appropriate action where it is deemed necessary to do so. Going into creating more detail, causing more error on the part of LSNS staff, put this together, is absolutely not...
Right. So, I know that you do have our plan, which is stretching, which we'll ask. So this kind of goes over what we're looking to do. We have a target date of the eleventh of June, that's our June meeting, and John and I will take steps until then to establish standards, and then report to you every month leading up to June as to what our progress is. So the idea here is that things can change, we'll just report on why they've changed. There are three subsections, so reports reaching out to other LSNS libraries, and then proposing metrics. Within the report section, we already checked off the first thing on our list, which was meeting with Katie, to go over what is available to her from her perspective, and all the tools accessible to her. The second thing would be the screenshot of the Polaris reports, just so John and I can do more research into what those reports would give us. And then potentially working with Joanna or Dara to get a Polaris login, just a view only, so we can go in there and not take up any of the staff's time, but be able to see what they see, and then see how those things will potentially become metrics for us, and then determine which reports we will begin pulling. In concert with that, we're going to reach out to the other LSNS libraries to see if any of their boards have already established a set of metrics, and then tailor those to fit our needs. So that's kind of just relying on our community and what's available to us through LSNS, our contract, to leverage work that's already been done, so we don't have to duplicate efforts. And then the proposed metrics section just talks about the updates to you, so it just has March, April, May, and then final June discussion during our board meetings.
Well, I want to thank both of you for looking into this. My concerns here are, I want to do this, but I don't want to pile on more stuff, because I can't hardly deal with all the statistics I'm seeing now. But if we can, as a board, and a key word for reading is simplify, because we can't make this more difficult with more numbers and get it down to where I would like to see it. I also am very cognizant of the staff, I do not want the staff to be burdened anymore than they are. And so I think, from what I heard you say, that we will be paring this down to reports that are more meaningful to us, which makes a lot of sense. My only caution is I don't want to pile on more statistics on what we already have, I want to simplify this and pare it down, and then we can use it time after time after time to bear it back. So I think it's on the right track, and I appreciate both of you taking so much time to work on this.
And I think that's what we're looking for, is just for metrics to tell a story, right? To tell us like how we know that the library is basically successful, because we do believe them to be successful.
Yes.
But just presenting a list of numbers basically that prove that to be the key.
I think if that's what you're looking for, I would start by looking at nationally and statewide what the professionals have the statistics to go by. So look at the California State Report of libraries, I would start there. And I, as far as LSNS, you know, industry standards, we're going high as, you know, being part of LSNS. So I'm not sure exactly what stats we're hoping...to me, this comes across as reinventing the wheel, because libraries have created...we've chosen the statistics that would give you prepared specific reasons.
Right, but like, if I'm looking at this from my perspective, you know, you report on physical materials, okay? So what does it tell me that there's a change in 500 from the previous month? Like, do I need to know that that's good, do I need to know that it's bad? How do I make the determination from like a perspective of someone who, you know, hasn't been in your shoes, right, that that is something that's good work at? Right, I have these numbers in front of me, but I don't have any way of determining what that means. And so I think that that's what we're looking to do, is saying like, a 500 book increase or material increase from the previous month means that we're spending our budget appropriately, it means that we're reaching out and ensuring that the objects that the public has asked for are being filled. So it's kind of just like spelling out what the data means to people, right?
Right, because you're looking for industry standards, like normally in business, you'd be looking for earnings, quantitative measures of sparse reduction or something like that. It doesn't really apply to libraries, because we're a community service. But what those numbers do indicate, if you see, you know, a consistent uptick, that more items are going out, it means we're...or it suggests, it doesn't necessarily mean, but it suggests that we are purchasing what our community wants, because the items are actually going out. So we're targeting the money correctly in that line item as far as budgeting for items, we're getting the right things. More people to program suggests that we're doing a good job planning programs, but there's no black and white, hard and fast in libraries, because it's simply community service or not for profit that can be measured quite the same way.
I agree with what you're saying in, for the most part, and I expect we'll run to a lot of just dead ends where what we research goes, this is the right video, and I got to go to another metric, go to another... But we don't know what we don't know, so contacting other entities that have contracted with LSNS and asking them what they're...what they use for metrics. And if they all pretty much say the same thing, and those metrics are...any of those are not what we're doing, then we want to look at it. If they're exactly what you're saying, then we'll be satisfied that what we're seeing is going to take care of what we want. But we don't know what we don't know, and but my goal would be, I don't...I'll probably be dead in eight years, okay? But...okay, but when this contract comes, of course, expiration comes up through you, the numbers are the numbers, and if the numbers have maintained like they are now, which are good, okay, then that makes everybody's life easier, that makes the business decision going forward clear. And I just want to get the...I want to get at the motion and the...out of...in a service contract, it's almost impossible to do, but you understand what I'm trying to make this as quantitative, not all of it can be program, outreach obviously can't be other than the number of programs and the number of people participating, and a few other things. But as far as the purchases, how well circulation is going with those, how well it's being weeded in three or five years, whatever your plans are, those are all things that show that staff is doing a good job, and they showed that now. What can we look at eight years from now, that the numbers are exactly the same as the numbers we come up from this year, that the statistics are, therefore, any change in the numbers would indicate either good, bad, or the same?
Environmental.
Huh?
Or environmental. I mean, in my mind, libraries, if I looked at a stat from eight years ago, they wouldn't even make sense, because we're not looking at the same things, because it's going to drive in a different direction. We're much more outreach, community service oriented than we were, you know, pository.
Yeah.
But I think that dichotomy is false, right? Like, you...just because you are a community outreach organization, it doesn't mean that there aren't like metrics for your success, so I hope that...
Well, I agree with that, and all I'm saying, what we're giving you are the industry standards, metrics that library needs, but you are...I'm not trying to...
Yes.
I feel like this is reinventing the wheel, that this will make you feel better about the stats that we're giving you, and...
Well, I don't think it's going to make...I don't think it's a feel better thing, I think it's fulfilling the duty that John and I have given by the city council. So even if it is, we spend the next four months doing this, and we come and say, look, this is it. What Dara and Katie give us on a monthly basis, that is it. At least we can say that assessment was done. You know, two board members, or the board spent four months deciding that that was it, right? And so then the question doesn't come up again, right, for the next day.
Exactly that, and we want to keep the politics out of this process that we're in here. And this is a...there's no way to do that 100%, but this is a way to defuse politics on both sides, both the ends of the spectrum. And I want to make it collaborative, because we say, oh, wow, this great number, and we show it to you or Katie, and you say, oh, man. And you explain why it's not a good number, well, that's good information for us. You know, we don't want to come up with something that is totally unworkable or not representative, okay, for long-term or short-term, from your perspective, okay?
So, I'd like to follow up on your comment, Ron, about being sensitive to the staff and re-impact anything that we decided to move ahead on, or the impact on the staff needs to be considered. If I can reference the past experience, when I was on the city council, not often, but every now and then, I had the feeling that staff members were unwilling to push ahead on something that they thought that they would like to support, or something that the council was thinking about going ahead with. And I don't know this for a fact, but I just sense that sometimes in the minds of the staff, like, well, shoot, they're going to do it, so why fight it? I think it's important to move in the direction, if we feel this is something that we would like to move ahead on, we propose that idea and so forth. But we need on the part of the staff to be quite candid in saying, okay, we understand what you want to do, but this is how things would affect us. And I think that's important, because if the staff doesn't, if the staff reaches that point and say, well, they're going to do it anyway, they're voluntary, why fight it and so forth, we've lost.
Yeah, it has to be...
Change what not be affected is, the staff says, yeah, we got it, here's what we need to work with to get it done, then it gets done.
I think those are great comments, and we wouldn't...if we get...we've got to get feedback from everybody, everybody's going to have their input into this process, and the final result has to be something that we all hopefully...
Well, we want the staff to support.
Absolutely.
They should be involved in the implementation.
I put in a couple projects, and if you don't have staff supporting you, your implementation doesn't...
Absolutely, that's what we're...
Point is well taken.
Katie, is this fiscal sheet that we get now, is that pretty much based on industry standards? Or is that created especially by our former staff at the library?
So, when I came into this position, well, my former position, in late 2018, when we implemented the contract in early 2019, it was a good part of my getting on board's... it was a good decision on the board's part to want to see a monthly statistical analysis. And I wasn't involved at that point in determining what statistics, you know, were in that report. I basically got feedback from my director at the time, please put this in the report, please put this in the report, we want a three-month comparison, we want a three-month year comparison. So those first few months was us working with you to figure out what format was going to be the most comprehensive. Since that time, I've tried to refine it so that I am doing as minimal duplication as possible. So the statistics that I give you are the statistics that I input monthly into the LSNS reporting module, the accounting opinions. They are also the statistics based on the 2018, 2019 California State Report, with a little less granular breakdown, because they want very specific things, like how many pioneer questions, how many literacy questions, I just give you the total altogether. So what I do is I have made the reports... So what I do is I have made the reports, still the three-month of, the three-month retroactive report. I also had to change some of the verbiage because when we transitioned from Sierra to Polaris, there were certain metrics that were not, they were not easy to count and it didn't seem as though were interesting to call out such as specifically how many museum passes circulated, how many laptops circulated. The numbers, and this was probably my hubris, but based on the two years of data that I had collected, it had stayed within a consistency of 50 monthly. So I decided that that was pretty stable. And we were collecting that data at the time to determine the future of replacing laptops, of getting more museum passes. And I think over a two-year span, the fact that they pretty, they were pretty stable, those are definitely things people want to continue. So I didn't feel it was necessary to call out every single one. So you'll look at the monthly statistics that you have. The physical materials, e-materials, old satisfied, and ILL checkouts are all specific to both the California State Report as well as the LSNS Report. The children's material and non-English material were new categories that were added to the California State Report in the 2018, 2019 year and will be new metrics that they take. So instead of me doing that at the end of the year for the whole year, I'm just doing it monthly. So it's easier for me to calculate. Our population and borrowers, that's a standard that's across the board report. Reference questions, same thing, like I said, within LSNS and the state report, they do get more granular. They will call out how many technology-based questions versus how many phone, on-phone questions versus how many in-person questions. I do have that breakdown, I just don't report it because I didn't feel that it was necessarily of interest. Public service hours and visits, also a standard question on all three. Use of the public internet computers, wireless sessions, and website visits, also on all three. Volunteers, same, programs, same. So everything is broken out. I try to do as much as possible to keep it standard across the board. So you are getting kind of the combination of what LSNS is asking me monthly as well as the two or three extra things that the state report asks for. So that you're getting kind of an overarching view without the really detailed granularity of some of those things, which I do keep, by the way, I just, it would make your report probably a bit longer than it is.
Thank you, Katie. Well, it appears that what you guys are going to do, John and Carolyn, is you're going to validate, in some cases, what's on this report.
Potentially, the validators just changes, right?
That's what you're going to do. So the point is, I think that, and again, I want to always emphasize, no one or even two in direct staff, it has to be a totally important decision. And that's true of every board, that's not just true of them. But I think that if you guys are going to do the work and you're willing to look at this and give us a validation of what we already have and hopefully, again, add some things possibly that we need to look at.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to deleting some things that we're looking at now. It depends on what we find.
Well, if you're willing to do the work, I don't know why that wouldn't be something that is important, that you'd be interested in having done. Because I look at it as validating what we're doing. And, but I want to make sure that we have, that the staff gets their input as well as the data that we collect so that we hear, we hear the side of the staff. Not much of what Ellen was saying, sometimes we don't know what they're going through and we don't know what they need to see. So I just want to make sure that if the purpose of this is to make us better, to do a better job, simplify, look at all of those, and the fact that you, Carolyn and John, are willing to do that, I personally think that's a good idea. But with the understanding that we're not going to put a lot of action work on staff and we're going to try to make this, what we have now is good, but we're trying to make it better.
Totally agree with what you just said.
I'm with you with one concern, and that is only the Polaris portion of this. Katie Smith, how long did you read the last couple of hours? So going through what is in Polaris, the difficulty in Polaris, and you have steps before you get to this review process anyway. But when you're talking to other libraries, even librarians, when we see those 50,000 reports and they are available in Polaris, we honestly don't know what many of them are, we got to use them in the past, until we've like gone through and printed them out. So with 50,000 reports, I think that we need to at least know what we're looking for when we get to this Polaris piece because otherwise it's going to be extremely tough because I'm either myself or Katie. So that is the one request I would like to put in is when you're wanting to get to the Polaris component, could you have, based on your other research prior to that point, have a target of what we're looking for within those 50,000 plus reports?
Based upon our previous conversation, I will have my fishing trip completed before I come talk to you.
That's my one request. Thank you.
Yeah, and then just to clarify, we're talking to the boards of the libraries, not the libraries themselves. To see what.
Some, yes, I did. Very nice person. Because that's who they put me through to. They didn't have, apparently they don't have a board.
Wonderful.
If they do, I asked to speak to the board, or if you don't have one, I speak to your head librarian. And boom, there she was.
Yeah.
So I'm assuming they don't have a board.
No, there isn't. So some of you, I.
Some libraries are providing the municipality or government rather than how you hold these.
Right, and getting to the person in the city that manages it is, I'm trying to do that in Riverside County right now. They don't even know. At least not the person I'm talking to. And I think, in just thinking about it, if there is city management and not a board, okay, then that would be, should be our primary point of contact. Because if they're managing the contract, they should already have some.
Right, yeah.
I mean, I think the directors want to talk to, especially if there's trustees.
Right, but if there is a trustee board, that would be our primary place to go unless they say, no, I don't want to talk to the head librarian.
Right, well, they're, I won't. Yeah.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, like, probably most likely it would be the staff.
Yeah, but it was, yeah.
I don't have to worry about that part of it.
No.
So would one of you, John or Carolyn, like to make a motion? To gain approval for you and John to work out this?
Sure, okay, so I'd like to make a motion that the library board will proceed to put this plan and go monthly update the manager for at this given sort of progress. And if we can change or refine our direction as we go along. I'd like to say.
Okay, you guys. It's been moved by Schwab and seconded by Cameron. Please vote. Next item is the library director's report.
Just going to go over the statistics really quick for this month, for which is December of 2019. We did see, we did see an increase in old satisfied, or sorry, ILLs checked out, which is great, we just had more people utilizing that service. December is typically a slower month for us with the holidays. So you'll see, whoever's a bit lower. I did want to give you guys a heads up on two things for the, it will be in the next report. I have decided, and we can, once again, as we're discussing, but there is one digital service, digital checkout service for e-magazines. It's a recent, we got it in July of last year. And I had not managed to put it on the report. So you'll see slight change in that top circulation portion. We are going to see all of the, all of the total circulation, including e-magazines. And then I'll separate out the children's and non-English below that. So that's going to be on the next report. Also, I did notice the total reference transactions. You'll notice in October is 8,932. You'll notice November and December are a lot higher. This is due to a calculation error in Excel where it was double counting technology questions. Somehow the formula got messed up. So I do have a note on the next set of statistics you'll receive in the February, the March meeting that shows January, December, and November with those updated numbers. I have tracked the error back. October was the last correct reported number, so I'm updating everything from that point. So just as a reminder.
That's exactly the type of thing I'd like to zero in on, where you have to create Excel spreadsheet.
And the issue I have mainly with that is, is has to do with software. Currently at this time, all reference statistics and all program and not re-statistics are handwritten by staff members. They are entered individually into the Excel spreadsheet. And then I have specific formulas in there that are supposed to tally them up. And all it takes is one cell getting moved or deleted and it messes up, like, and it's perpetual. So I have looked into different softwares that would allow staff to enter it on their own and then export the number, the math is done in the program. And I definitely am interested in that, but it has to do with financing that program and being able to train staff on using it. But that's something that I definitely, it's a staff intern thing, it's not something that is obvious. But it's something that I definitely want to do and find better reasons, ways to do.
Oh, sounds like a good project.
I have one question on the statistics. I ask this just as a question, I'm not sure, but I'm looking at wireless sessions from May through now.
Yep.
And they are downward trend, is there some reason?
So I have it with the exact month this occurred on my annual spreadsheet. What happened was at some point last year, we were having two failing access points in the library. And we had a very old system in place. And so the city generously decided to upgrade our wireless system to a much more accurate system where it will remove duplicate folks. So for example, if I connect to the access point on my phone when I walk through the door and then my phone, I walk into another part of the library and I connect it to that one, Edel County is one person instead of two people.
I think we've talked about that before.
But it's, even in the last three months, it's continuing down.
Yeah, maybe we have less wireless users in the library. Also, there was a point last year where we cut the hours the wireless was active. So the wireless used to be on 24/7. At some point in the middle of last, once again, I don't know for the last few months why this accounts for it, but we did have a point in the last year where we set on and off times for the wireless network. So the wireless network now turns on half an hour before we open and turns off half hour after we close. So folks who may have been hanging out out front using the wireless overnight or early in the morning now are unable to use it.
That brings up an interesting question, but we've got no reason to go there, okay?
But those are, those are the only two reasons I can think of for numbers being down based on technology. The other reason is simply that we have less users during the holidays in the library. Yeah, we do also have our closed days during November and December.
Yeah.
And I do know we were having problems at the access point that's the circulation area. So anything that's near the front of the library, we had issues with connectivity. IT just fixed it probably in the last two weeks because I couldn't do that either.
But if somebody had data available on their phone, could they just get into the system that way? Not use your wireless?
Well, right, so wireless is only users who are connecting to our wireless network when they're in the building. So they're either using their phone, they're using a laptop, they're using a tablet. There's plenty of people who don't use wireless at all and simply have data on their phones. We have no way of tracking.
No, not at all. Okay, thank you.
Ron, I have a question. It's not a burning question, but I wondered how it works. There are certain days that the library is closed, holidays, national holidays and so forth. How are those decisions made ahead of time? Who makes the decision other than those decisions that are made by state law that we have to, you know?
We.
How are those decisions, is that something that's decided on the contract between Escondido and LSNS ahead of time or is that something that's decided as days go by?
That's decided between the city and city tells LSNS which days they want the library to be closed.
So the city has some involvement in that?
That is the city's decision entirely. They can, LSNS sets the days, deal orders.
Does that include library closing for staff development?
Yes.
That's specialized in the contract. So the contract basically states that we will follow the city's closure dates for holidays. We are a seven-day-a-week facility, so there are certain days that we discuss with the city, whether we're going to observe the observed holiday or the actual holiday or both dates. But primarily, we follow the city's closure dates for the rest of all of the city hall and all those buildings. We do have specified in the contract that we will have one, one day that we are closed for the annual staff training, and that's in September. It's usually around the 12th or 13th every year. Last year, we got special permission to have an additional close day, which we requested of city council for the new Polaris training. So we were closed so that staff could train on the new software system that was running. But we do have to get permission from the city council in order to be closed.
Thank you.
Well, you also brought before this board a request to allow a library to be closed so that you can do training or whatever it was. So I appreciate you doing that. Okay, go ahead.
Okay, so we do an annual survey and this year it was delayed a bit because we were trying to coordinate with the survey the city was going to put out. So in a short, one short month, we managed to get 1,114 surveys responses in total. So I think that was a pretty good result for the number that came in. I gave the links for you to review the survey results.
Yeah, I read the English one.
Yeah, did you have?
Yeah, I was, I was looking at all the responses and I was, when I got down to ethnicity, okay? Out of the almost 1,100 respondents, only 70 responded in that category. Okay, and 82% responded as Caucasian white and 10 or 12% as Hispanic Latino. And if that particular ratio is representative of the whole 1,100, I, we can't tell, I guess.
Right.
So it, you wonder, without knowing that, what use you can make of the data to help about half the city?
Yeah, I, I mean, unfortunately we can't fill it out.
Do you have any numbers on how many people fill it out in Spanish?
Yes, and I am sad to say of the, we'll sit up here and talk.
Okay, so this is the English survey.
Oh, okay, and that's, so.
We can get those numbers.
Well, we can actually go to the Spanish one.
Yeah.
I want to say it's like less than 30 unfortunately. And the ones that we take that were Spanish were from our outreach programs.
Uh huh.
The outreach of schools, we were able to get some Spanish.
Yeah, I mean, we tried lots of avenues. We put it in our newsletter.
I know, I know.
We had it in paper in both languages at our service desk.
I feel your disappointment, I, you know.
Well, it was one of those. Well, it was one of those things that, before I even had the chance to really talk to Joey, but we do the survey more often for most libraries, but I think it might be, need to be a priority every three or every five years to make it much more, more toward an outreach project rather than, you know, in-house sent-out and advertised survey, whether we have people like brochure speakers and area malls or, or, you know, festivals, whatever, we kind of write, get more people that actually aren't using the library. But I still feel like this gives us at least some indicators as to who's attending programs, some of the things they want to see and what they feel is important about the library as far as things that we're, you know, trying to serve. How many, there were only twenty-five Spanish surveys today.
Were you going to talk? I was going to ask a question. I'm always somewhat, not always, but sometimes skeptical of surveys, depending on the motivation of people who are putting the survey on, whether they already have a goal in mind or whether they truly are trying to get information that's relevant and valid. I'm assuming that an organization that makes these kinds of surveys are the kind of people that made the survey, right? These are organizations that are, that's their job, to survey.
Yes.
People with regard, in this case, library interest. Is that...
Yes. The survey is actually almost an exact duplicate of the survey that we ran last year, and when that one was initially run, it was created by a consulting firm that specifically works in, and I'm sorry to say I don't know their name, but I can find it out, but it's a company that LSNS used to create this survey specifically for our library last year.
Do they, does that organization that was employed to do that, did they create, they have the questions that they create in order to get the answers that we got, or do we design questions on a survey that...
I don't know, I will have to talk to Debbie Boy, who is our communications marketing person that oversees the survey.
Well, I have no, I have no reason to doubt, but I, I always ask the question, the kinds of surveys that you, the kinds of questions an organization asks sometimes determine a goal that that organization wants to reach, rather than get objective information.
I didn't see that, any of that, and I read the survey questions and the answers. I really, I didn't see anything, I'm an expert by any stretch of the imagination, but it didn't look like your expert said it, or the other.
I didn't sense that either. Ask the question, because it's a general question, all surveys are, you know...
Yeah, share your skepticism.
So one of the things that I noticed was that about twenty of the thirty-one questions were answered by more than half the respondents. That leaves like eleven that weren't. And then, if you notice, the first question has the absolute most respondents. So I think moving forward, it would be nice if maybe the board could have some say in what that first question was, like if we're trying to determine goals for the new year or, you know, things that we really want to know. I would say having people visit the library in person or online in the past twelve months, I see that's a really good question, but I would like a little bit of more say from the board as to what that first question should be.
Yeah, and I, I have no answer or idea, but if there's a way to try to get this to be a better cross-section of the populace, certainly, I know, I know you would prefer that also. I don't know what to do. It appears that we didn't get enough of the, of the Hispanic Latino population, which is a big half our population and probably benefits more from the library than the rest of us, or could, yes.
I'm also wondering how you guys chose to email out the survey? How did it?
Oh, it went out in the newsletter and also went out to cardholders.
Okay.
So...
Okay, it was linked on the homepage of our website, and we pushed it on social media with the links directly embedded in the social media posts.
Right.
So that was how the primary methods, plus, like I said, we printed, we had printed copies available in service desks for people to fill out by hand.
Right, so I got mine through email, so you guys use my cardholder email tool.
Yeah, so we, we have a caveat on the card application that asks if you would like to opt out of receiving our e-newsletter because we want, that's how we get the majority of our important news out, is by the e-newsletter. Those office patrons, plus their email address does not opt out of our e-newsletter, they add it into our e-news subscription monthly. We have a pretty low subscriber rate too, so I'm assuming it's pretty well received.
Yeah, that's the only observation I have, I'm sorry.
What's that?
I hate to, I, I didn't really want to pour cold water on this survey, because it's a good survey, it's just disappointing that we didn't get the cross-section results.
Well, at, at least we do it annually, so it gives us a chance to plan for this year as far as trying to make that a top priority. I know our marketing and outreach coordinator was the most, we didn't buy this, like he, I think if we had let him, he would just get started over to try and get more cross-section, but this pointed in the direction we'll come with ideas for this year.
Yeah, well, it sounds like you're already working on it. Okay, good.
I have you.
So I just want to reiterate, if you guys have been following the information that's been presented to the City Council about the community survey that we've done as a city, that a sample size of a thousand people in a population of a hundred and fifty thousand is statistically very significant. I mean, we were told by our expert, True North Research, that we only needed a sample size of six hundred people. So the fact that they have a thousand respondents to this library survey, I think is quite good. I would also caution you to not assume that just because someone didn't mark that they are Hispanic or that they didn't take it in Spanish doesn't mean that they are not of Hispanic descent. So I think it's, it's, I just want to caution you not to judge the results and to think we're not hearing from the Hispanic community, because that's not what these, these results indicate.
Also, staffing, we had one of the ones who has been at the library for a little, where are they here? She's twenty-five, okay. She hasn't been at the library for quite some time. She announced her retirement in January, and her last day was January thirty-first. We have recently advertised a position, position and have received numerous resumes and a lot of qualified candidates, and we started interviewing this week. So we're going to get that position filled as soon as possible.
You frightened me, I thought you were talking to Katie.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
And then, beyond that, we have another successful one, especially with the Lion Dancer, which was the Chinese New Year celebration. It was an all-ages event, it had a hundred and twenty attendees. There were sixty-two people who participated in our first-ever Lego program, which is kind of the elementary school ages introduction into robotics. So we're pretty excited about that. Our youth services team visited Central School for a parent meeting and hosted three-class tours, and were able to speak with overall parents and students. Additionally, we had eleven programs for children, kindergarten, sixth grade, with two hundred and three people in attendance. For preschool-age children, we had thirteen programs with six hundred and ninety-nine attendees. Our team programs in January were a little lower in numbers. I don't know if that had a lot to do with the holidays or all the flu going around, but we had eight attendees for Animal and Jungle Book, and Beautiful Nail, R and A, Teen Fantastic Fun Time had seven, and the Ruppup Book Club had two. Adult Services hosted two writers groups with a total of twenty-six people in attendance. Our two book clubs had thirty attendees. Our second Saturday concert had sixteen attendees, with fifty in the library and eighteen viewing on Facebook. And our Wollis Fair had seventy-five attendees, and our Ruby Matinee had twenty-nine. And there was an outreach book club for Cypress Court with all people in attendance. Do you have any questions?
We have, at the Friends of the Library Board meeting, came this subject about the recent survey, I guess the national survey, showing that libraries are used much more often than ever before. Want to make any comment on that?
Yeah.
Maybe everyone else has heard that, I was just impressed with that information.
Yeah, Katie's going to pull it up. It was from a Gallup poll, and they had surveyed a lot of people, but in the U.S., libraries outpaced trips to the library in twenty nineteen. So we can live on it, all of you, if you would like to read that, and I think it was just out in, like, January of this year, but it is, I don't know, can you see it on your screen?
Could you mail a copy of that to each of us?
Certainly.
Because I think that's worth reminding the public. That's remarkable.
Anyone have questions for Derek? Catherine? Normally I wouldn't do this, but we have a short agenda, so if you'd like to speak, come and please talk to us.
I thought the meeting was at two-thirty.
It's at two o'clock.
I'm Catherine Barbour from, I'm a native, and I've seen all the libraries, including the original Carnegie library. I am busy when I'm here, trying to provide books to elementary students, and so I'm raiding all the consignment shops as well as the Friends accommodations. And I provided a lot of books to schools that I went to. The Friends have had a sale, which I am told is because the library had too many books. I find it disconcerting and strange that we have to stock a branch library and we get rid of a lot of children's books where it's perfectly good shape. And I don't approve that. I don't know how you're going to buy books, because children need the books, particularly in the summer. So I would like someone to tell me why this has happened.
May I comment on that? I'm speaking from the view of the Friends of the Library that has a end-of-month sale for the year, and it's been very successful. I think most people know, we, we do very well in raising money to support library programs and so forth. The fact that the library went through their cleaning process and made decisions about what books they did not, did not want to continue for various reasons, not enough use and so forth, but anyway, the point is, they offered all of those books rather than just take them and put them in the dumpster, they...
Why would you put perfectly good children's books in a dumpster?
No, no items were put in the dumpster unless they were just bi, on occasion, we have biohazard-type books, of course, somebody's blood on them in return.
Well, they're in very good shape.
Well, if they were in very good shape, they would be in our dumpster, they would be in our book sale.
But let me continue my response, please. And so a large number of books, they asked if we would like to have them, and we said, fine, thank you. So we, we put them out for, for sale in the, in the shop. It turns out, they just don't sell very well. And so now, we're having to, rather than try to sell those books that are normal and needed by the library, we just have to put them in the dumpster, because they just don't sell, and we have a lot of other books to sell. We, we tried it, and we were very happy, a few of them sold, but there's just not the market from the general public.
Are you talking about children's books or regular books?
All books. Children's books, the books that are, that are phased out of the library system. They offered to us, they said, if you want these, you can try to use them in, in the shop. We no longer really want those because they just take up a lot of space and they don't sell.
How are you going to stock the, the branch library?
Pardon?
How are you going to stock the branch library? Who's going to be in charge of it?
I can't answer that.
Well, somebody has to make decisions about buying books, and, you know, I don't think this group is in charge of the branch library, so how are you going to stock the branch library with children's books?
So there's some, there's some confusion here, some misconception. I think what Ms. Fram is referring to is the partnership with Palomar. So that is not a branch library, that's not a branch of the Escondido Public Library. That is Palomar's Community College Library that we're educating the public that they have access to. So Palomar retains all decision-making, all authority, and has their own funding for stocking materials at that library. So there's no relationship between the books that leave the Escondido Public Library and the Palomar Community College Library. But what I might suggest, though, is that, Elmer, if the Friends have children's books that you can't sell and that you have no further use for, perhaps you could partner with her and just donate them to her for her use in the work that she does with, is it Conway? You volunteer at Conway? Or, no, Central? You volunteer at Central School, right?
Well, I've given books to a lot of schools in Escondido. I'm not convinced that Palomar College is going to stock a really good children's collection. I have seventy books, which I, these very good books, which I took from the sale and kept them, rather than give them to Central or Lincoln, because I felt that they should be going to Palomar College New Library. You can call it, it's not a branch, that's fine, I have no, I'm not trying to call it a branch. What we're trying to do is create decentralized library systems.
Well, Palomar is also staffed by professional librarians, and so, you know, they definitely have the knowledge and the professionalism to purchase materials for, that are adequate for youth. You could certainly reach out and, and offer to make a donation if you want to give those books.
I can donate them.
Sure.
I, I think if you have books that are in that good a shape, you should be giving them to places like the Palomar Library, or, you know, or even the school system. I'm giving the books all the time.
Well, and I can, I can speak on behalf of the Friends, because I have attended their meetings for many, many years, that they do have relationships like that with the schools. So there are members of the Friends boards that have relationships with principals and with school librarians, and they are donating on a regular basis the overstock of children's materials that they have. But I would encourage...
Now, that is the dumpster, and I don't approve that.
So I would encourage you guys to connect and maybe to attend one of the Friends of the Library Board meetings and say, give them your contact information so that when they have overages that can't go elsewhere, they can come to you.
We're doing it right now, so you're welcome to come and ask.
Well, I come all the time. I come probably two or three, or four times a week to try to make sure that I give, you know, like I just gave all of the fifth grade in Central, each child got a book. So the point is to try to do this as much as possible, and I know what you're trying to say, but on the other hand, you know, I, I got some very good books and there was really, well, I will say that there are some that may, but may not have circulated well, but for the most part, these were very good books. I sent some to other schools, and the people were delighted to have them. So that's, you know, I mean, I think you just don't discard books in this day and age. We have pitiful sums of money for everything, and we need every, every book we can find. Thank you.
Thank you, Catherine. Are there any other questions that the board members have before adjournment? Anybody have a motion to adjourn, please? It's been moved by SWAB, seconded by Clemmons. Please vote.
Question through four zero.